Good afternoon and welcome to the regular meeting of the Forsyth County Board of Commissioners. The meeting will be followed by a briefing session today. We will begin our meeting with an invocation from a good friend of Forsyth County, the Reverend Laura Spangler of Lloyd Presbyterian Church. And that will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Commissioner Ted Kaplan. Please stand if you can. Pastor Elaine, you're on, Pastor Spangler.
Hello, this is Laura. Are you ready for prayer?
Yes, we are.
Okay, thank you. I'm so happy to be with you all, at least in voice. Thank you for asking me to pray. Let us pray. Almighty Father God, we come before you on this national day of prayer. What a blessing to be able to pray publicly and to ask for the presence and guidance of your Holy Spirit. We praise your son, Jesus Christ, and we give thanks that he saves us from our sins. Lord, you are the highest governing authority, the source of wisdom and power. We humble ourselves before you because we have a lot of problems that only you can make right. Jesus, please give us unity in your love and blessing upon our county commissioners in their decision-making today. Lord, we pray for the citizens of Forsyth County as well. Together with our government, may we seek your will and wisdom to honor your word in the Bible. Help us to cooperate and respect each other and to share our resources fairly. In Psalm 33:12, you tell us, "Blessed is the nation whose God is the Lord." And so we lift up our country to you at this time as well. In the matchless and awesome name of Jesus Christ our Savior, I pray. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Spangler. Kind of a special day because not only did Pastor Spangler point out that today is the national day of prayer, but as I was talking with Commissioner Fleming Elamene a moment ago, today is the birthday of the Say Hey Kid, Willie Mays. He's 90 years old today. Happy birthday. And we go from the birthday and from prayer to, I think it's appropriate, to Joshua Swift, who is a Forsyth County Public Health Director, and he's here to tell us the latest on the COVID-19 virus. Mr. Swift, you're on.
Yes, good afternoon, Commissioner.
You've been muted. To unmute yourself, press star six.
Now for almost 14 months since the beginning of the pandemic last March. So our COVID cases over the last 14 days, we've had 793 cases. And our average cases per day is now 57 per day. So we have seen a leveling off. We were at 45 cases per day four to five weeks ago. Then we moved up to almost 70 cases per day, and now it has leveled off. So that is a good trend. We hope to continue that leveling off and a decrease. Our total death since the beginning of the pandemic is 374. So this next slide shows you a distribution of the COVID-19 cases based on the week of testing since March 7th through May 1st. And as you can see, we saw in early April a huge uptick in the number of our cases that were in younger individuals, especially those 15 to 24, which is the highest line. And that still is our highest line right now, although that number has went down overall. So you can see that our numbers primarily are from those 15 to 24, those 25 to 34, and those 35 to 44. You also see the orange line, which shows a slight uptick over the past few weeks in those that are 5 to 14, those cases from that age group. Next slide shows the trend in the number of residents who are hospitalized in Forsyth County hospitals. They're Forsyth County residents, and they're in Forsyth County hospitals. You see that number is going up, but we're still staying in those 30s and 40s where we've been at for the last few months. So that is still a good trend. Although we're seeing an uptick, we hope that levels off and stays in the 40s. Our COVID vaccine administered by the Department of Public Health, as of May the 6th, we've administered 89,358 total doses. And that is 30,574 individuals who have completed their series of vaccine. Next, wanting to look at the number of the population who are fully vaccinated. This is based on all provider records. You can see as of May 4th, 139,400 residents in Forsyth County are fully vaccinated. That's 36% of the population. And the number of the population that is at least partially vaccinated with at least one dose is 42% of the population. So that's 160,537. So when you take that number, 160,537, and you take out all those that are under 18 years of age, and you look at our population 18 and over, and the number of persons 18 and over that have been vaccinated, that's 53% of our population that have been at least partially vaccinated. So 53% of Forsyth County residents 18 and over have been vaccinated with at least one dose. You look at the next slide, this looks at the percentage of the population who are fully vaccinated. And you can see the breakdown by age and by race. I won't go through each line, but you can see that in both of these slides, fully vaccinated and partially vaccinated, that most of the population over 65 are fully vaccinated. But you can see that we have work to do with the 18 to 49-year-old range, the young adults in those ranges. We are working and trying to gear our promotion, our outreach, our media, our message to that group, not only to decrease hesitancy for the vaccine, letting people know that it's safe and effective and been tested, but also to increase urgency to now is the time to get the vaccine. We have ample supply. It's available, and now is the time to do that. Next, you can see on the right side by race, you can see the breakdown there. 24% of African-Americans in Forsyth County are fully vaccinated. 36, almost 37% of white residents are fully vaccinated, and 19% of Hispanic residents. This next slide looks at the number of individuals in Forsyth County who are at least partially vaccinated. 42% of the population. You can see the breakdown by age on the left. Again, we have to focus on that 18 to 49-year-old range because that's the least vaccinated portion of our community. We're also keeping an eye on the 0 to 17-year-old range. Right now, only 16 and 17-year-olds are eligible to get Pfizer vaccine. But we do anticipate possibly next week that Pfizer will be approved for 12 to 15-year-olds. So we're looking forward to that and hope to see that age range get vaccinated in the community. And you look on the right, you can look at the breakdown by race. You can see 28% of African-Americans in Forsyth County are partially vaccinated. 41% of white residents are partially vaccinated, and 25% of Hispanic residents. Of vaccine availability, as I said, the vaccine is now more widely available than it's ever been. It's available now in more places. At the, with the Health Department, we have appointments and walk-ups for Pfizer first doses available. We're coming back today. Actually, it's our first day back at the Department of Public Health since January. We have been at the fairgrounds. The city has been a great host. It's been a great location, and it suited us well when we had the need when we were seeing 1,500 to 2,000 people per day. But now we're not seeing that demand, so we're shifting our operations back to the Health Department, where we have, it's, we're continuing to do our Health Department operations. Those haven't stopped at all throughout the pandemic, but we're able to use less resources and be a better steward of our resources here at the Health Department, the meet the demand. You can see the web address. It's posted all over our social media. And our phone number, 336-360-5260. People can call from 8 to 5 to get an appointment. If you don't want to get an appointment, you can walk up. And you can see our clinic hours this evening will be open from 4 to 8 p.m. And we'll be taking walk-ups up until 7:00. Saturday, we'll be at the Health Department again, 9 to 12, taking walk-ups until 11:00. Just a few more slides. Again, this is another graphic. Thank you, Todd Luck, for putting this together. We posted this on social media, just showing that individuals that got their first dose at the fairgrounds will get their second dose at the fairgrounds. Our last day out there will be May 24th. But individuals that get their first dose today and going forward at the Health Department will come back here to the Health Department to get their second dose. Again, as I said, we anticipate Pfizer approval for 12 to 15-year-olds in the next week. And we're looking forward in the future that younger children, 2 to 5 years of age and 5 to 11 years of age, will be approved possibly in sometime in the fall. September is the date that we're hearing now that Pfizer will be submitting for that EUA. A future goal, and this is just, you know, our goal is that 70% of Forsyth County residents will be vaccinated. Where we are now with 160,000 residents partially vaccinated, to get to 70% of those 18 and over means we have to get another 50,000 residents vaccinated. That would be 210,000 residents 18 and over. That is our goal. That's, I believe, what we need to hit, that 70 to 75% range. You hear the term herd immunity. I don't know if it's necessarily herd immunity, but control of this virus is what we're aiming for. We, you know, we have other viruses and illnesses that public health has been dealing with for decades, like measles and things like that, smallpox. But especially, what you see is that it's more prevalent in areas where people are less vaccinated. So that's in pockets, and that's what they're seeing now. They believe that will happen in the future. It'll be in pockets. And our goal in Forsyth County is to not have those pockets, to have the majority, the vast majority of our population vaccinated against this so we're prepared and able to get back to normal, what we all want to do. So that concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to, excuse me, go in the wrong direction, take any questions.
Mr. Swift, and we want to do that. If you give me just one second. First of all, at this point, we'd like to make this announcement to those who are interested in participating in the public session of our meeting. And that means if you have a problem with what we're doing at the county, if there are needs or interests that you're interested in, plus, good or bad, we'd like to hear from you. I mean, we have a phone number, and I'm going to give that to you now, and I'll give it twice, and then we'll go back to Mr. Swift. The code number for you to call is 336-422-1200. For those of you who are rushing to get a pencil or pen.
I can't hear anything. I don't know if that's just my...
It's 336-422-1200. You'll be placed on hold until the public session begins. And now let's get back to Mr. Swift. Mr. Swift, did I understand you to say a moment ago that May 24th is a significant day because on that date, is it the last day that you're going to be giving immunizations at the fairgrounds? Does that mean that on May 24th, everyone will have to come to the Public Health Building? I wonder if he heard that, Mrs. Sloop.
Mr. Chairman, I think he's having some issues.
Okay, well, in that case.
Mr. Chairman, I can answer that question. May 24th is the last day of second-dose appointments at the fairgrounds. Starting today, first-dose appointments are already taking place at the Health Department.
So May 24th is the big day, right?
At the fairgrounds, yes, sir.
Right, okay, thank you. Any further questions that Mrs. Robinson might be able to answer, Commissioners? Okay, thank you, Mr. Swift, for your report. Now, the first item on the agenda today is a public hearing on the zoning petition of CNKS LLC, zoning docket number 1598, set for Agenda Item Number One. Madam Clerk, have you received any comments in favor or in opposition to this matter?
No, Mr. Chairman.
All right, this is a public hearing. Do we have anyone who is familiar with what we're talking about who would like to make a comment one way or the other? If not, then I'll declare the public hearing closed. Do I hear a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Motion to approve by Commissioner.
Well, I have a motion about, I think we're ready for action on this particular, and this is F-1598. I'd like to move that the zoning map amendment, F-1598, including site plan and special-use district, be approved on the basis of the following. The projected special-use zoning map amendment is petitioned by CNKS LLC to rezone 26.47-acre piece of property from residential S-30, basically 30,000 square feet, to our S-20S residential building, single-family, is consistent with the recommendations of the Legacy Comprehensive Plan and reasonable or in the public best interest because, one, the subject property is an undeveloped tract located on the east side of Twin Creek Road, north of Bunker Hill, Sandy Ridge Road, straddling Forsyth County-Gilford County border. And the subject property is surrounded by properties owned, RS-20, RS-30, RS-40, and agriculture. The proposed RS-20S zoning is intended to accommodate single-family houses in suburban areas. The proposed use in site plan feature the construction of 35 single-family houses, permanently located, predominantly located in Forsyth County, with a density of approximately .76 houses per acre, which would be consistent used to nearby residential neighborhoods. And there will be 13 additional houses in the development located primarily in Gilford County. The subject property would have access to sewer, but would not have access to public water. And finally, the subject property is located in Growth Management Area 3, which is suitable for RS-20S zoning, and the request is consistent with the Southeast Forsyth County area plan.
Is that a motion?
Looking for a second.
Second.
Oh, it was a motion, excuse me, a motion by Commissioner Martin, a second by Commissioner McDaniel. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Before we get on to the second public session, I want to repeat the telephone number for those who would like to participate in the public session of this board. Now, that will take place in just a few minutes. But the number to call, if you have a problem or need, call this number, 336-422-1200. 336-422-1200. And the clerk to the Forsyth County Board of Commissioners, Ashley Sloop, is prepared to answer the phone. When she does, you'll probably be put on hold for a small amount of time. Next item on this agenda is a public hearing on an ordinance to amend sections of the UDO to align with CES 160D (0DDO-C10). Madam Clerk, have you received any comments in favor or in opposition to this matter?
No, Mr. Chairman.
All right, I declare this public hearing closed. And do we hear a motion on it?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the changes to the unified development orders.
Elamene, second. Motion by Commissioner Martin, second by Commissioner Fleming Elamene. Discussion. All in favor of Commissioner Martin's motion, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. The third item on the agenda is a public hearing in connection with the financing of the courthouse facility, Caladium, and an airport project in the refinancing of the current debt obligations. This is a big one. First speaker on this will be Lee Plunkett, Assistant Chief Financial Officer. Is Lee here? Lee, I think you're going to be on remote. If so, you can take it from here as speaker. Wonder where Lee Plunkett is? We have a conversation going on with the county manager. He knows a lot.
Mr. Chairman, we are having some audio difficulties.
You are no longer muted.
Oh, gosh. Technical difficulties completely beyond our control.
Mr. Plunkett, can you hear now?
You know, we could say the Pledge of Allegiance again.
Ashley, this is Chris. I can hear now.
Oh, good. I can hear. I can hear. You're on.
Ashley, this is Paul. I can hear also.
Thank you. Mr. Murphy, the Commissioners have voted on UDO CC10. So, Mr. Chairman, the next item is number three. Will you please introduce it again?
All right, the third item on the agenda is a public hearing in connection with the financing of the courthouse facility, right next door to Government Center, Caladium, and airport projects, and the financing, refinancing of current debt obligations. Did we get that all? Have they gone?
Yes, this is Lee Plunkett. I'm here. Sorry about that.
Okay, go right ahead.
Yes, on April 1st, UDO Board approved a resolution authorizing the county to proceed with the financing of the courthouse, Caladium, and airport projects that are currently underway. It also includes the refinancing of current debt obligations, which are the PNC Bank Draw Program Loan and the 2009 and 2012 Limited Obligation Bonds. This new financing will be in the form of limited obligation bonds that will be secured against the court. against the courthouse property. As a part of that initial resolution, the public hearing was, this public hearing was called to allow for any interested persons to comment on the financing.
Can you take questions?
Sure.
All right, commissioners, do you have any questions on what Mr. Plunkett just said? All right, if we have no questions, madam clerk, have you received any comments in favor or in opposition to this request?
No, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Following the requirements of Session Law 2020-three, the board will continue to receive public comment on this matter until four PM on the seventh of May, 2021. Now, if you wish to make a comment, please call three-three-six-seven-zero-three-twenty-twenty for directions. And now let's take some, uh, time for the public session of the commissioners. Do we have anyone on the line, Ashley Sloop, for comment?
Mr. Chairman, we have a public hearing for, um, an economic development project. It's number four.
I understand that. I thought we'd take the comments first.
Oh, no. We have received one comment. I'm sorry, I misunderstood you, sir.
That's perfectly all right.
And this comment is from Greater Winston-Salem, Inc. Greater Winston-Salem, Inc. supports Blue, Project Blue Wave and the significant capital investment and well-paying jobs it will add to the community. Growth and expansion of our existing industries are essential for local economic development. We greatly appreciate the Forsyth County Board of Commissioners' support of the business community and encourage the approval of incentives. That is the only comment we received, sir.
Okay, thank you. Fourth item on the agenda is a public hearing to consider the expenditure of county general funds for an economic development project and authorizing execution of an agreement with a company. We have Kyle Haney, who would speak on this particular item for economic development. Mr. Haney?
Good afternoon, commissioners. I'll pull up a presentation real fast.
Gosh, I like that name, Project Blue Wave.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Um, so as was discussed two weeks ago, following the new, um, procedures on how we're handling the economic development incentive projects, uh, we did use the code name when we briefed this project the first time. However, for the public hearing, we will disclose the name of the company. So, um, before you, is a proposed incentive for Project Blue Wave. Uh, this is for Ar-Dog Metal Beverage, uh, USA, Inc. They're a metal and glass can manufacturer, a global manufacturer, um, who is public and traded on the New York Stock Exchange. Globally, they have over sixteen thousand employees, and their total sales are over seven billion dollars. Locally, they currently manufacture and distribute out of a facility located at four thousand Old Milwaukee Lane. It is their largest manufacturing plant in the United States and currently has over two hundred full-time employees. Ar-Dog is considering, uh, expanding their manufacturing, uh, in a number of locations, but one of those would be at the current facility. Uh, they have, they would be adding two new, if they chose to come here, they would add two new manufacturing lines and invest a hundred and ninety-five million, five hundred thousand dollars between business, personal property, and facility upfits over a two-year period. If they chose to come here, they would also add ninety-four jobs, with the average wage being, uh, over a hundred and thirty percent of the average, uh, wage for Forsyth County, and those jobs will be created in 2021. The proposed incentive before you is the standard five-year, fifty percent incentive. Uh, looking at the, the numbers there, that would total two million, seven hundred and forty-nine thousand, one hundred dollars over five years. Here's a, a breakout of that analysis, what that looks like over five years. Additionally, uh, I included a projection of, after the five-year period, the projection of what tax, taxes would come into the county for the next five years, so that's almost three million dollars. Some additional considerations here. So, Ar-Dog is considering, uh, this facility, they're also considering sites in South Carolina and Georgia. Uh, the state is, is considering some proposed incentives as well, including, uh, one North Carolina rural, uh, building reuse and customized training, and the city of Winston-Salem will also be considering incentives for this project. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Haney? If not, madam clerk, have you received any comments in favor or in opposition to this matter?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I will read the comment again.
All right.
And this is from Greater Winston-Salem, Inc. Greater Winston-Salem, Inc. supports Project Blue Wave and the significant capital investment and well-paying jobs it will add to the community. Growth and expansion of our existing industries are central, essential for local economic development. We greatly appreciate the Forsyth County Board of Commissioners' support of the business community and encourage the approval of incentives.
Okay, thank you. Following the requirements of Session Law 2020-three, the board will continue to receive public comment on this matter until four PM, May seventh, 2021. Commissioners, we have to reset the computers. We actually have a technical problem with the high-class stuff that we operate with, so we're going to take a five-minute recess.
Well, now, one of the highlights of our meeting today, we will resume with our official meeting where we vote. The next item on the agenda is a resolution recognizing May 2021 as Foster Care Awareness Month in Forsyth County. The following staff members and guests are here to receive the resolution from our vice chairman, as you've seen just now, Don Martin going down. Those folks are John Thacker from the Department of Social Services, Sharita Kane, DSS, Alicia Bowles of the Children's Home Society, and Sarah Fitzgerald of the Children's Home Society. Could you all come up and stand around with, hang out, I guess you could put it, with Commissioner Martin? He loves to have an audience. And especially people like you, you do such wonderful work. You've already brought happiness to the room. You can start now, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a resolution recognizing May 2021 as Foster Care Awareness Month, whereas the family, excuse me, whereas the family serving as a primary source of love, identity, and support is the foundation of our communities, whereas over 100,000 children are in foster care system in the United States because their own families are in crisis and unable to provide for their personal safety and well-being needs. Whereas foster families who open their hearts and homes and offer help to children whose families are in crisis play a vital role in helping children to heal, reconnect, excuse me, and transition successfully into adulthood. Whereas in Forsyth County, there are 240 children in foster care on April 1st, 2021, being provided with a safe and stable home by licensed foster families, relatives, and approved caregivers. Whereas the needs of children in foster care results in a greater need for trained foster families, communities, parents, and additional resources. Whereas the Forsyth County Department of Social Services depends on the active support and involvement of Forsyth County community to support the well-being needs of children in the foster care system. Whereas as the Family and Children's Division of the Forsyth County Department of Social Services continues to implement trauma-informed practices to support the emotional, behavioral, and well-being needs of children who have experienced abuse, neglect, and dependency within their previous environments. Whereas the Children's Home Soc, excuse, Children's Home Society of North Carolina is a community agency that routinely partners with Forsyth County Department of Social Services in training foster families and screening permanent homes, securing permanent homes for children and providers in a variety of resources, including community training, support for licensed foster families, recruitment of adoptive families, and post-adoptive support services. And whereas the Forsyth County Department of Social Services acknowledges that the foster care system needs more compassionate foster and adoptive homes to ensure placement stability for children and to help them heal, therefore engaging partnerships for every level are critical to the success of the foster care system. Now therefore be it resolved that the Forsyth County Board of Commissioners hereby recognizes the month of May 2021 as Foster Care Awareness Month in Forsyth County, and encourages all citizens and community partners to consider how they can assist with supporting the emotional, social, and academic needs of children in the foster care system as they grow to become citizens in our community. I'd like to make that motion, Mr. Chairman, on the sixth day of May 2021.
I will second the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Good. I see, I saw Victor Isler and John Thacker.
Yeah, Commissioner Martin, I did leave one person out, didn't I? In the names, that's very important. You know, many years ago Kitty Callen made a recording called "Little Things Mean a Lot," and the last thing I want to do is leave Victor Isler, who runs DSS, out. Is that true, Victor? Are you still here?
If I may briefly, Mr. Commissioners.
Thank you, Commissioners.
I'd like to thank the Children's Home Society, Alicia Bowles and Sarah Fitzgerald for partnering with us. The last 18 months have been challenging in reference to COVID on many levels, and it's had a ripple effect when it comes to children in foster care. Children's Home Society has really stepped up to the plate and provided some timely partnerships around placements, and I just want to publicly appreciate them and say thank you for their partnership in helping us secure homes for our children.
Well, we're so happy you're here. We're glad all of you made it. Thank you so much.
Chairman, if I may, I wanted to say thank you to all of you as well. I mentor one of the children that are in foster care, and she will be graduating from UNCG this May, so thank you all for all that you do.
You know, this has turned out, even though we have busted computers, it's going to be a great day, a wonderful day. By the way, I like your sunglasses. The sixth item on today's agenda is approval of minutes for the meetings of April 5th and April 22nd. Do I hear a motion and a second?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Fleming Elamine, second by Commissioner Ted Kaplan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Manager, I'll turn the rest of the meeting over to you. And as you can see, the manager got up and walked away.
I think we're ready for a public session.
Public session.
Well, we've done that.
We have to vote for public sessions. This is for call-ins.
That's what I thought we were getting. Do we have telephone calls?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we have three callers.
Well, my, my, we do not want to, I hope we have about 45 minutes, maybe a couple hours. I'll turn the meeting over to you, Ashley Sloop, clerk to the Commissioners. Tell us who's on the line.
You are now available. Thank you. This is so funny how they aren't red to meet.
Hello. Hi. Thank you for calling the Forsyth County Board of Commissioners' public session line. This session is for comments only, and questions cannot be answered. Please state your name and address for the record.
Brianna Schaefer, in 320 Fox Lake Court, Winston-Salem, 27106.
Thank you. Speakers will be limited to three minutes, and a 30-second warning will be given. You may begin.
Hi, my name is Brianna Schaefer, and I live in the 27106 zip code. I'm calling with Triad Abolition Project. While we'd like to celebrate that Wellpass contract was not renewed again this time, as abolitionists, we know that simply replacing them with a different company profiting off the present industrial complex as the healthcare providers of our siblings locked in cages on North Church Street is not a win for our community. We are relieved that Wellpass will no longer neglect and perpetrate harm on our community and on our incarcerated siblings. However, we also understand it is counterproductive and a continuation of an inhumane practice to have one privatized healthcare entity replaced by another. Unfortunately, there is no way for us to believe or ensure that NAF Care will not demonstrate the same pattern of medical negligence and pursuit of profit as Wellpass has done to our community for almost a decade. According to the 2019 Atlantic article titled "The Private Option," there is quote "no national agency charged with systematically ensuring the quality of healthcare," end of quote, "and there are no mandatory national standards. The only form of oversight is through litigation, which places the burden of proof on already incarcerated individuals and their families, who are often steeped in poverty. The justice system has disproportionately failed and continues to fail black and brown folks. The only way to ensure that no one else locked in cages are harmed or killed by the state is to make decisions for the county that aim to end carceral harms and instead shift to care-centered options for our community. As NAF Care is set to take over the almost $16 million contract that spans across the next three years, Triad Abolition Project pledges to remain vigilant in keeping a close watchful eye on the treatment of our incarcerated siblings perceived from both NAF Care and the FCLEDC staff. While the budget process continues this spring, we also ask that county managers and county commissioners work towards investing taxpayer dollars into mental health crisis services that would not involve law enforcement. In taking this step, our community would be much safer to call 911 during a mental health or substance use crisis and immediately receive medical or mental health care instead of law enforcement. Thank you for your attention to these matters. I yield my time.
You are now available. Thank you.
Thank you for calling the Forsyth County Board of Commissioners' public session line. This session is for comments only, and questions cannot be answered. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Doug McManus, and I live at 130 Secret Garden Lane, Apartment 6.
Thank you. Speakers will be limited to three minutes each, and a 30-second warning will be given. You may begin.
I am calling with Triad Abolition Project and the Forsyth County Police Accountability and Reallocation Coalition. In meeting on January 21st, 2021, we re-inquired of the county commissioners about the approval of a one-year contract for Hunter D. Loflin to continue his media work for the Forsyth County Sheriff's Office, Facebook news shows. We are continuing to ask for clarity as to why FCSO needs this Facebook media resource when the local news media that is regularly in contact with us, FCSO, accurately reports on matters occurring in our community. Furthermore, we would like to know how much it costs in further resources to maintain the FCSO news show, and how can this information be made transparent to public tax preparers who pay for it? We do not agree with tax dollars being allocated towards law enforcement-centered media when we know there are blatant inconsistencies in the reporting of the truth. We also don't want tax dollars allocated to law enforcement media that does not intervene when people in the community are encouraging hate and harm in the comment section of any such social media account. A simple scroll through the FCSO Facebook page reveals some interesting insights. On April 3rd, FCSO posted on their Facebook page that, quote, "Several of our detention officers spent the afternoon in Cleveland Homes to assist Redemption Church host an Easter celebration," to which two people commented eerily, quote, "Don't go back at night." If you're one from Salem native, you know that Cleveland Homes is located in East Winston, an overpleased, low-income area. The notion here is that it's too unsafe to be there at night. FCSO did not intervene to strike down these horrible, stereotypical, and racist comments. Furthermore, when FCSO announces that the detention center will allow limited visitation to individuals incarcerated, an individual in the comments stated, "Stop it all, cut off the TV, feed them water and bread, make them work daily on a chain gang, maybe the capacity numbers will go down," and others condoning those racist and inhumane comments for commiserating and agreeing with that individual in subsequent comments. I want to make clear to you that whoever runs the FCSO Facebook page is very active and often responds to people's questions and comments. Not in these instances, though. They let these racist, bigoted, violent comments exist and fester under their watch. Though increased surveillance and tax dollars allocated to law enforcement media, Winston-Salem and Forsyth County continue to utilize public resources in the interest of controlling and manipulating the public.
You have 30 seconds.
Thank you for your attention to these matters. I yield my time.
You are now available. Thank you.
Thank you for calling the Forsyth County Board of Commissioners' public session line. This session is for comments only, and questions cannot be answered. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Albert Noda. I'm at 4261 Witherboro Road, Winston-Salem, 27106.
Thank you. Speakers will be limited to three minutes each, and a 30-second warning will be given. You may begin.
All right, thank you. My name is Albert Noda. I'm what they call an ambassador for the United States of America Pickleball Association. The purpose of the ambassador is to go out into the community and promote pickleball. I'd like to address, through a modest allocation of stimulus funding that's going to be coming here fairly shortly, and other funds to create up to 12 dedicated pickleball courts through converting existing little or non-used tennis courts or through new development. Keep in mind, six pickleball courts can fit into two side-by-side tennis courts. By doing this, we can increase revenue into the local businesses through tourism that is creating vacation destinations and hosting large tournaments, as well as increased local resident spending. In 2019, we hosted in Ratt, the North Carolina Open Pickleball Championships at the Wake Forest Indoor Tennis Center, where we converted eight tennis courts to 16 pickleball courts. We had 250 players from as far away as the West Coast, as well as several top professional players that came and gave clinics, as well as participated in the tournament. We had several agreements with local hotels for discounts for our participants. We had 40 to 50 volunteers that helped run the tournament. What have the surrounding communities done? They've already created dedicated outdoor courts. Some communities such as Maxwell, iPhone, Salisbury, Mount Area have already created their dedicated courts. Greensboro itself has at least three different dedicated pickleball locations. What have we done locally? Locally, with county and city approval and cooperation, we've converted since last May nine tennis courts to multi-use. That is, you can play tennis or pickleball on these courts. And for, say, Joni Millard Park in Lewisville, currently we have over 110 participants in our online organization iPhone app. So what is pickleball? Pickleball is one of the fastest-growing sports in America. There are over four million players. In fact, it's so popularly heard that CBS Sports recently, about a week and a half ago, televised live the U.S. Open Pickleball Championships, gold medal matches. Several players in this area were down there and participated in it. So what is pickleball? Pickleball is a court sport which uses a paddle, a wiffle ball, and is played on a batminton court with a net about the height of tennis nets.
You have 30 seconds, sir.
Thank you. What I'd like to do is submit a summary, a two-to-three-page summary with different options, as well as cost, estimates, and benefits to doing this with the funds. And I'd like, also like to invite you and families out and show you what pickleball is all about. Thank you very much.
Is that our last call?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Because I want to ask a que, I've never heard, is it knickerball or kickerball?
Pickleball.
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 Like cucumbers.
Yes, yes.
Oh, gosh. Can you play it with a paddle?
Play with a paddle, and a lot of older folks.
You could, that pickled me, you know what I'm saying? Gosh knows.
You end up with relish when it's.
Do you really? This is, now, this is the kind of public session we want to have. It's an educational opportunity.
It's a great game.
We need to form a commissioner pick ticker? Wait, does it start with a P or a T?
Pickleball.
Oh, pickle, for sure. Pickleball. We need to get that. I nominate the two of you as chairman and vice chairman, or whatever you want to be, and let the girls play the game, and I'm, you know, I'll referee. Well, thank you very much, Ashley Sloop, for what you've done. Thank you all very much for coming in. Do we have anything left on this particular agenda?
We do have some business items, Mr. Chairman.
All right, sweet, it's all yours.
All right, thank you. We do have some business items for consideration this afternoon. We have reviewed these in briefing sessions at least twice, and hopefully have answered all your questions, so I'll dive into the agenda. Item 8 is a resolution approving a contract for the purchase of a DS 450 Central Count Tabulation Scanner for use by the Forsyth County Board of Elections. It was funded with the HAVA grant of about $250,000, but this particular expenditure is $56,225, and you heard from Tim Suji.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Ted Kaplan.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Fleming Elamine. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
All right. Agenda item 9 is a resolution authorizing execution of a contract between Forsyth County and Media Placement Services Incorporated. It provides advertising and marketing for testing and vaccination efforts related to COVID-19 at the Department of Public Health. This would provide not to exceed $99,556 for these marketing purposes.
Questions, comments?
I do have a question.
Yes, sir.
I have a question and a comment. And the question has to do, I just happened to, I looked at the spreadsheet of items proposed to be done, and looked at the various advertising venues, and it did strike me that there were like six print media newspaper-type folks, and one of them, all of them had two advertisements except the Kernersville News, and he only had one. And I figured it looks to me like we ought to be doing two to all of them, and they're listed on there, and there's distinctly just one for the Kernersville News. So I'd like to request that we at least do two at every one of those media outlets that are on the list. And then the other side of this is that, you know, we just heard Joshua Swift, this is my comment, we just heard Joshua talk about, you know, the young folks, you know, issue, that sort of 20 to 35-year-old, that we've had a lot of spiking going on, and we're trying to move toward, we're not moving very fast from the, since we crossed about the 50% of the, taking the 18 years and older, we hadn't moved very much. It seems to me the value of this advertising ought to be a little bit, there ought to be some jumps there, based on, you know, the advertising, and I don't see anything particularly geared at young people other than some Facebook, social media, and I'm just kind of, kind of curious about the, kind of the effectiveness and expectations we're having for our $100,000 worth of advertising.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. So we can absolutely add another advertisement for Kernersville News within the existing budget. We could figure that out. In terms of the younger population, there's a strong push on the digital platform, so we actually had a meeting with Media Placement Services, as well as the City of Winston-Salem. So we have a lot of digital stuff going through Snapchat and TikTok and all of the other stuff, I don't know, with videos and to where it's, you know, they're clicking on things to hopefully try to schedule an appointment, as well as radio ads on the HIPIS radio stations that I also don't know. And so there's about half of those funds are specifically really targeted to the younger demographics. It may not be as prevalent on necessarily the piece of paper, but I can tell you in our discussions and what's currently happening, there are a lot of things out there targeted to the younger demographics.
Okay, yeah, this list is pretty general, and, I mean, it basically says Facebook, Facebook, Instagram is basically 7,500 bucks, and then there's one for Google Display, so and they, it actually breaks it down into general, health, and adult 65. There's a, there's a piece of that going for older adults, too, and we're at 80% of that group. So anyway, I just, I was curious, and I hope that we're kind of measuring their success with some kind of bumps of actually more people getting vaccinated.
I mean, at the end of the day, that's certainly the hope and why we're focusing on marketing media, but, you know, we don't have any real tricks up our sleeve. I mean, the state and other counties are struggling in the same way. We really are just hoping that this additional advertisement will speak to, you know, a generation that will hopefully help them to get vaccinated, but I don't, I think it's going to be challenging to say, you know, really measure the success, because we are really at the final stages of those who, you know, already want the vaccination, or they've been on the edge, but we're really hoping that with some cool advertisement, we may be able to target some additional people.
Commissioner Kaplan.
Chantel, in addition to that, I understand that Pfizer or one of the other companies is developing a vaccine for children between five and 18, or five and 16. When we were kids, and polio was the deal, we all got those little sugar cubes and taken care of at school. Is there a plan in place now to give this vaccine in the public schools? Should it be approved?
Yes, so we are anticipating that next week 12- to 15-year-olds will be approved by Pfizer, and then by September, starting at age five. And so the school system sent out a survey for us to see how many children would be interested in receiving the vaccine. We received the results this morning. Low participation in terms of who actually completed the survey, but high participation from those who actually completed it. And so one of the questions was, you know, were they interested in receiving it at the school, at Novant, at Baptist, or at the health department? And there was about 25% that's interested in receiving it in the school system, but we are planning to take our strike teams out to various schools to offer the vaccine, as well as possibly some other immunizations while we're there as well. So that is, the plan, and the schools have been collaborating with us on that.
Will this vaccine require parental consent?
So right now, for 16- and 17-year-olds, it technically does not. However, there is discussions about what may be required if we actually go in the school system, and so we've been having some conversations with the state, as well as Dr. Oll, our medical director, to see what we legally can and cannot do. I don't think any of us are comfortable going into a school system and not getting parental consent.
Mr. County Manager, we've had a lot of discussion on this item, so for clarity, would you repeat the item that we're about to vote on?
Absolutely. It's a resolution authorizing execution of a contract between Forsyth County and Media Placement Services Incorporated to provide advertising and marketing for testing and vaccination efforts related to COVID-19 at the Department of Public Health.
Further discussion and motion?
No approval.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Whizen Hunt.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Fleming Elamine. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item 10 is a resolution awarding a contract for inmate healthcare delivery services for the law enforcement detention center. Went through a long process that involved lots of folks around, not only determining what the marketplace looked like, but also the process for receiving bids. The recommended provider to you is NAF Care Incorporated. It's a three-year agreement for on-site, off-site, on-site and off-site medical services. And then also, we included the mental health component that the board requested to be funded with MOE, MOE reserve.
Discussion on this item? Motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Fleming Elamine.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tanya McDaniel. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
We've got a couple of property matters. Item 11 is a resolution authorizing publication of an offer to purchase county-owned real property by negotiated offer advertisement and upset bid. The address is Zero Sheraton Street. We received a bid from a Mr. Curtis Cazo of $7,950 that would start that upset bid process.
Questions? Comments? Motion?
No approval.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Martin. Second by Commissioner Whizen Hunt. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item 12 is a resolution authorizing publication of an offer to purchase county-owned real property by negotiated offer advertisement and upset bid procedure at Zero Kevin Drive. We received a bid from Alpha and Omega Investments in the amount of $5,000, which would start the upset bid process there.
Questions? Motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Tanya McDaniel.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Fleming Elamine. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, we have several appointments, but I would turn it over to the vice chairman, unless he would want me to handle that either way.
I'd be glad to.
Okay.
I want to thank again, we have three different groups of appointments, those that have been willing to offer their services, to serve, and the first committee is the Firefighter Relief Fund Board of Trustees. We have one appointment to serve on that, and it's a, simply a county appointment that could be, anybody can request. We actually have five citizens wishing to serve, Kevin Bray, Adrian Krieger, Wesley Hutchins, Jeffrey Shaw, and Macio Jenkins. Please vote for one.
I'll second that motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Next, we have the Forsyth County Juvenile Crime Prevention Counselor, Council. Next, we have the Forsyth County Juvenile Crime Prevention Counselor, Council. We have one appointment to fill the unexpired term of Brad Stanley. Expiring June 2022. This particular category is a sheriff or designee, and we have one law enforcement suggested Lieutenant Robert Mathia. And I'd like to make a motion, we approve Lieutenant Mathia by acclamation.
I will second the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Finally, we have the Planning Board, City-City Planning Board. There are two joint appointments, four-year terms expiring February 2025. The category is city resident. We have one incumbent wishing to serve, Chris Ford Leek, and citizen wishing to serve, Walter Farabee. And basically, we can approve, I'd like to make a motion, we approve those by acclamation.
I'll second the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
We have a couple of added items. Item fourteen is a resolution authorizing execution of necessary documents to accept the United States Economic Development Administration grant for the fiscal year 2020 Public Works and Economic Adjustment Assistance Program to support Smith Reynolds Airport. You've got an associated amendment to the 2019 Pago Capital Projects to Transfer Funds. And then item C, you've got an amendment to the 2018 Smith Reynolds Airport Capital Projects Ordinance to appropriate revenue from the United States Department of Economic Development Agency.
Questions? Comments? Motion to approve by Commissioner Ted Kaplan.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tanya McDaniel. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And then the last item is a resolution requesting the North Carolina General Assembly to enact Senate Bill 629 in order to support the equine industry and horse racing in Forsyth County, North Carolina. I know there's been a request from members of the legislative delegation to support that. It would establish a racing commission, and as you will note in the resolution, it's really geared around trying to bring back horse racing to Tanglewood Park.
Motion to approve by one of horse racing's big champions, Ted Kaplan.
Second.
Second by Tanya McDaniel and Fleming Elamine. Half of this board is in favor of it, and we haven't even voted yet practically. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed?[1738.41][1738.41](laughing) Motion carries unanimously. Good job there, Mr. Manager.
That is all for the formal session that I have, Mr. Chairman, just we have the briefing items.
Commissioners, anything you'd like to say or do before we go to the briefing session?
Point of privilege, please, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I meant to mention this at our last meeting, but Clementine Shaw, the wife of Jim Shaw--
Yes.
--passed.
Really?
Yes, I meant to bring it up and forgot about her. So since it's our national day of prayer, I would appreciate a moment of silence in her behalf.
I'm so glad you mentioned it. I did not know. She was a wonderful lady. Any further comments? Do I hear a motion to adjourn this meeting? We'll be back in about six and a half minutes. Commissioner Kaplan says so moved, adjourned. Seconded by Tanya McDaniel. We're adjourned.